Okay, Maddie's gonna be, the chair's gonna be about five minutes late. So the board's just gonna start reviewing both proposed bylaws till she gets it. So we'll be quiet for a little bit.
Like to take that on?
Yeah.
Forgot mine. Just any piece of. It's recorded, but no.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I would do the same.
Thank you.
Yeah. Save you time, you don't have to re-watch all of it. Or otherwise rented for a period shorter than thirty-one days.
Say that again.
I missed that.
She crossed with yourself.
But she can in there.
Didn't see, yeah, the note.
Yeah. That she said your res, but. Hold on, I have no sign up from.
To say it's in here, which I'm fine with, but I just missed that the first time.
Yeah, hold on, I have her rough draft. She went through it all. That's A D, right?
Yes.
Because she didn't want to, she didn't want to give a ton, a number of days. She says, you're better off just saying.
Referring back to the.
Right, right. We want to specify this.
Who didn't?
Counts, counts.
Oh, okay, but Maddie wants to leave them.
Maddie, Maddie, I don't have. She said everything looked okay, so that's still there then.
Okay, good.
But I have a feeling that should come out. And which one are we doing? Transfers on the agenda, A D. Can't remember.
No battery.
Battery, okay. Should have started without him, I guess.
Question on D. Page three.
Battery?
Yeah, battery. It says. What solar photovoltaic installations shall adhere to fifty, seventy-five foot setback. One hundred side. But which one is it? Add them together.
Which page are you on?
Page three, D, third set, third line.
Paragraph.
Second line.
Paragraph.
Setback.
It's confusing.
Oh, it's seventy-five. Seventy-five, we changed it to, it was fifty.
You left the word fifty in front of the seventy-five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hello?
Oh, yeah.
Hi, thank you. We've got to cross off of fifty, I think it's seventy-five. Oops. On paragraph D, page three. We changed it to seventy-five.
Oh, I see. Sorry, I missed that.
Our Joanne.
What?
Page seven. Number two, where you spelt out D V H, is it diameter? I Googled it. Wait, where, where is it on page seven?
Uh, the top, number two. Oh, you just spelled it wrong. Supposed to be diameter.
It is supposed to be diameter, yeah.
Oh.
Why doesn't it pick it up?
You would think.
I mean, D I, yeah, I got it.
You got it.
Paragraph each, I was, I just wanna make sure I did that right. Or you could. Do you want your notes?
How do you? I look at it side by side.
Okay, so it's right.
Yeah.
Just a question on the fire protection, John. On the battery systems.
Go ahead.
So.
What page?
On page four. So it's fire protections. I thought, do you put these out with water? You know, is that just something else, you know, there more to this and?
Well. In talking with. Firefighters, they said that the only thing you can really do is trying to keep it cool with water.
Yeah.
Until the energy and the battery elements. So that's kind of. And I use a.
No, okay.
Anyone see anything else that I missed?
Working on it.
I will. All the changes from. Last, this one, I find anything else, just the two. She, they found page three, a typo, but she's got.
Yeah, I crossed up with fifty, the fifty.
She put seventy-five in parentheses, but.
Yeah.
I missed that one, I compared it.
Uh, page six, seven point one eight two. Do we need to put a definition for abandoned in here? Do you have it in quotations?
Uh, is that in the definitions of the, in the bylaws?
Like in the, the.
What? Abandoned.
Abandoned.
Seven point one eight two, page six.
I can't hear, seven point one eight two, the word abandoned.
What page is it?
Six.
Six.
In parentheses, you put, we don't have a definition for abandoned.
Your hands right up.
Page. Yeah, of course, what section?
Seven point one eight two.
Oh, eight two, okay. We don't have definition for. Let's do their original comment.
Now, bring Google back.
Seven point one seven nine is, wait, abandoned.
That was in the original. That was in the original. From where?
Now, seven point one.
Seven nine.
Seven nine is our conditions for abandonment.
Alright, so I think we just get rid of that parentheses.
Yeah, I do too.
Have abandonment.
Seven point one eight two, striking that.
Yes.
So.
Part, we don't have a definition for.
Period?
Yeah.
Yeah, we said that.
Where are you saying, seeing that we do have?
One page, right above page five, yeah, the page five.
And I didn't, in you, I can still make copies of the table of each, we weren't changing that, correct? That, so I'm staying as is. I just make sure before I.
Were you eight, seven?
Yeah. My hand will chop this, because you're not writing down.
I see.
Yes.
Uh, number eleven.
Contact.
We're speaking to my.
Says the season. How are you? Another day. Really? Yeah. Well. Job security, lot, lot of feelings. Train some, soon. I thought my son's okay, they're fourteen. But he's only a hundred and ninety pounds. He's six-four, yeah. I don't know. I don't know where it came from. Not Bailey. Six feet.
Are you guys still going through battery energy search? Yes?
Yes.
The poem is finally.
I just saw it on my car.
They sinus this one. Eyes are sticky like Joann's. I'm at the point where they gotta be pulled out. Thank you. They make eye drops now for like people who work on screens all day. That my. You stare at that, your eyes just.
Yes, optometrists claim it doesn't make. No screen all day, doesn't do anything to your.
My contacts don't bother me, they come in.
Oh, it's probably other reason.
Probably the. So.
Mental.
Nothing. Christina, were you good with that table?
Not to add anything to this, right?
Yes, yes. Can I, I'll take that, as you know, I'm gonna forget to send it to town administrator with this.
I wasn't even at this one, I don't know why I'm reading it. Yes.
Yeah. Get caught up.
Like I broke out a point of us, the C P's representative, and I wasn't even here. Oh, yeah, yes. Oh, yeah, by the way. Okay. No, the, the by, the title line to that was, if there's ever, if you ever have to go and you can't go, I will go in your place. Okay, so don't feel pressured. I was like. Sorry about that, it's, we figured you'd find out eventually.
Discussed it beforehand and I pretty much agreed to it.
We're like a team, we're a team.
Yeah, we're the team here. Attacked even, attacked. No. Sounds like. Sounds like, but it's not.
Sorry. Keep it on the. What's the phone number?
You told me you was on a. That's what I forgot was, but it sounds like, it sounds.
Alright, any additional comments to battery energy? John, are you still reading it?
I, I, um, go ahead.
Are you texting?
Pardon me?
Texting?
No, I'm looking up words. I'm just looking up to see.
We're looking up words, did they? If they.
I'm just kidding, I know.
If technically they, some of this stuff can be done, oh, yes. You can move on.
We were double checking.
So, so page three, I'm changing, cutting out fifty.
Yep.
Just making sure I've got all the comments. On page six, I'm saying ground mounted solar energy system is abandoned, period.
Yeah.
Under, okay. On page seven, I'm fixing diameter was cut out.
Yep.
Right?
Definitely.
And. Since that's it, and the table of use, I'm attaching to it, it hasn't changed.
Correct. Your motion.
Oh, well, yes, we can. Well, I was told by Rose. Don is doing. His recommend.
That one.
What are you calling?
The draft, the letter.
Yeah, but. Cut, yeah, that would come to the board, but then the board has to vote and agree, because it has to come from the planning board.
Right.
So we'd have, do you have that?
I don't have it ready yet, but I'll have it in a couple of days.
Okay. Four AM tomorrow.
So. Put on a pot of coffee.
Before I send it in, I'll have.
Okay.
I'm just gonna do my own work.
Okay, so, um. That would go with, that would go with the bylaw to town administrator as part of, would that be, would that be distributed at town meeting as part of the bylaw?
No, I think that just goes to.
The Attorney General.
Right, after it's, assuming it passes that, right.
Okay, so we won't need that to give to town administrator, okay? So you'd have to vote before town meeting to accept that, have it come from you guys. Okay, and then she said, if you want a legal position memo, she can write up a legal position with cases to substantiate your points. However, there's not that many cases. If you decide you want it. Yeah, but just, just telling you what she said. So that, so this.
Did she say about? One of the questions we have is that it wasn't attached to the warrant. So. Are we gonna have to read it at town meeting, the whole bylaw, or, or do we need a motion to waive the reading? You'll have copies of it there at town, that's what we gotta figure out.
Yeah, she said, she said we distribute copies at town.
I don't have to.
I don't believe it has to be read completely in its entirety.
The eleven pages.
That's eleven pages.
Admitted to that. I'm pretty sure that's what.
That's what you said last time.
Yeah, that's what.
Very clear that if they shoot this down, then it's a free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this one I'm giving.
Pass it, or they can do whatever they want.
Once it's done.
Huh?
She made the changes.
Once I make these changes, I'll give it to him. Yeah, so this is the final, make the changes.
Does anybody wanna make the recommendation at town meeting for this?
Yeah, we gotta do that.
You'll do it?
You wanna make it at town meeting?
Well, I'm saying who wants to get up at town meeting and talk about this, does somebody?
Well, we have to vote on.
We have to vote to.
Recommend it.
To recommend it.
I know, I'm just, okay, I know, I'm just asking. I'll do either one.
Who's gonna talk about it at town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. One of you guys.
Yeah. Just, you know, we'll. I'll write something up, you'll tell me, it sounds stupid. Okay, I'll do either of them, I don't care which one. Alright, now, well, now somebody can make a motion to recommend this at town meeting. Right?
Yep.
Move, we recommend the proposed bylaw for battery energy storage systems at the May twelfth town meeting, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
I second that.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Great. Alright, we'll look at the A D U.
There were some questions on gross floor area and how it was configured on multi-family. I did get a document from Rose.
Yeah, I looked that up last time.
I have a question, something we didn't do in table.
We have, we.
We have it.
It didn't change from the last time we reviewed it.
Didn't change. Oh, so you're just doing changes?
Yes. Did you wanna take another look?
You wanna see it?
Yeah, it's okay. I trust that. Same.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the battery one? Yeah.
Go ahead.
If anyone wants to know what the definitions for multi-family and how you compute the gross floor area, I did get it from Rose. You raised the question.
I did, what did she say?
Here, it's a lot, you can read. You wanna see it and then pass it to John?
Alright, yeah, no, you're fine, I'm just reading highlighted stuff, which just confirms exactly what we looked up last time.
This one's easy. All I gotta do is read A through D.
I know.
The whole orbus.
It's not as convoluted.
Anywhere. Is that copy? Thank you.
Um, so if I speak to the bylaw on solar, then I would be more suited to the A D U. Wait, what? John would better say that to speak to the Senator if he can, because he's on advisory. I have some, I'm gonna feel the questions. I know, that's, we can go together.
I'll be there.
You wanna do it?
I didn't say I wanna do it, I said I'll be there, I have to talk to the veterans.
Make sure you tell them that if.
I'll be, I'll be right there next to you.
Law doesn't pass, then it's a free for.
Right.
There is no bylaw, and they are allowed to build it, so.
I take a picture so I can read it while you're reading it. I'll, I'll be right there next to you. Or I can.
Not the tiny cabinet.
I don't know that that would be an overly lucrative.
Alright, so.
Business.
Right.
Not here anyway.
You didn't like that? Whenever you said that and walked out, I was like.
Yeah, that's like a big thing out in like the shares.
I mean, I see how it would be a lucrative thing in Berkshire's.
Yeah.
But I don't think anybody's like, hmm.
Dying to come out.
Wonder where I can stay in Handen, Massachusetts.
I think so.
I don't like this part.
What part?
It says, uh, multi-family gross floor area, they're counting every floor, every space. And then they can do half of that, or nine hundred.
I didn't read it yet, that was. That's where the question was raised, might be.
Yeah. So it's to some of the areas of all stories of the building, of the compliance ceiling height pursuant to the building code, including basements, lofts. Intermediate floor. Intermediate floor, air interiors. Measured from interior faces, interior walls, from the centerline walls, buildings, dwellings, units. But excluding crawl spaces, garages, and parking areas, and attics.
But the bottom paragraph where she highlighted confirmed what we looked up last time.
Right.
Where you're just taking the largest.
Where are the multiple, right, so it.
What she said is.
So if it's a two family.
You just take apartment or house, you take the bigger footprint and that's what you divide it in half.
That's right.
Right, it's not combining both.
Not a combi- combination of all the floors.
Joanne, did the ADU apply for? Something or?
Somebody came in.
The words on the bottom.
Did they apply or were they just questioning?
Where there are multiple principal dwellings, a lot.
Head plans.
Of the lot, GFA of the largest principal dwelling. Shall be used.
By all means.
But it doesn't specify.
State of. It was a test or did you?
It's a house on my street that could definitely. Make theirs, well, it would be part of their principal dwelling.
So that's, I have a question. So that nine hundred for the ADU doesn't count towards accessory buildings? So you can have half your gross area for accessory buildings and the ADU?
Yeah.
And the ADU does not count towards any of that?
Right.
Okay. Just to clarify.
Well, that's a good question. When taking into account accessory buildings, you cannot take.
Then we have the.
Square footage.
Crazy, it's ridiculous.
Don't you back, you only focus on one thing.
Oh, really? There's not much you can do about that?
No, the ADU, you're.
Your ADU is. Yeah.
It's get passed to the state this ADU thing?
Right after we wrote the one last year. Like.
Love it.
Yes.
Did you know it was coming and that's why you wrote the other one?
No.
No, 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 we didn't. We just wanted to get something.
Something on the book.
Yeah.
Because otherwise there was really no.
Apartment.
No, over.
Not bad. I'll write something up and send it to, you want me to write something up, Maddie, and send this to you?
For what?
And review it? Do you want me to talk for this one?
Sure.
Alright.
Yeah, I am a horrible public speaker. If I could sit up there, I think I'd be fine, but standing just.
Done it. I need to stand.
Are. Is it proposed that we're gonna include? This in the bylaw?
Well.
You're gonna include Matt's general law in the bylaw?
I, I don't know. I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea. What, oh, right here. The definitions from MGL? You do what, what do you think?
Review that? Have we done that? Is that?
I just feel like it's kind of a unique thing.
Well, we referenced.
We've referenced it so many times.
So we might as well just add it.
Well, so what's the difference between this and, well, I guess the first one and our definition?
So if they amend.
If they amend, we'd have to amend our bylaw.
Is that what you want?
Not really.
Would you just ra- rather just say? MGL, C forty A. You know?
Yeah. Well.
Yeah, I think, because then you have to go to the town meeting.
You have. It becomes a maintenance issue.
Yeah.
That's up to you guys. I'm just.
Good point. I think I'm.
Lou, what if they change, what if Matt's changes something and we don't like?
I don't think it makes a difference.
Could we put this, like a date to this? Right here?
Well, then, but either way, even if it does change, we still have to go back and amend it. I mean, I don't think that this is too far off of our definition, so I'm okay with getting rid of it. And we reference it in the front on the.
Definition.
Right.
It there.
Yeah. Do we reference?
Character three.
Yeah, paragraph three anywhere.
Yes.
Under. Oh, yes. Yeah, I say we don't include it.
So take it off?
If we, yeah, and third page it's.
Yeah.
What's the piece? permitted.
permitted, not. Okay.
Special permit.
And it's not. Right.
Okay. I'm good.
I'm good. You need a? Motion?
Please.
Uh, put a motion for. To go forth to the town meeting with, for the accessory dwelling unit ADU bylaw. Amendments.
Second, hold on, favor?
Alright.
All right.
So between now and town meeting, do we have a meeting?
Yeah.
Nope.
No? So when will we vote on accepting his document?
It'll have to be on, so how quickly after, if, assuming everything passes at town meeting, how quickly after that do we have to send it to the Attorney General? Okay, so our next meeting.
Literally.
No, we're not. I don't think we're gonna meet the week of town meeting. Usually we don't, right?
What?
We don't usually meet the week of town meeting.
Our board? No, no.
So we wouldn't meet until the twenty eighth?
Okay. I have. Wait, ninety days, just a minute?
I think. Well. Let me ask you a question. Your next meeting, scheduled meeting, should be the fourteenth of May.
Right. Wait.
Is that when you wanna?
I thought we usually, usually don't meet the week of town meeting.
Town meeting is the nineteenth, if I'm correct.
That's the twelfth.
That's the, that's when you gotta go vote.
Okay, yep, sorry. Okay, so. No problem.
So do the twenty eighth. That'll give you time to, assuming it passes, then you can, right, we can compile it all.
Sure.
Fan mail.
We're gonna plan to, um, recommend or approve the letter, whatever the terminology is, on the twenty eighth of May. So that gives us time after town meeting to put it all together. Yes.
Well, to vote, it's our report.
Yes. Well, yeah, so we need to meet the eighth.
Yeah.
So you guys can, just to, uh. May, may. Up with where in my mind, this is because. We need some bylaws because some builder can go to Joe Schmo in Handen that lived here forever and has a hundred and fifty acres, beautiful, that he used to farm. And buy it from him because that's his nest egg. He buys it, Joe Schmo goes to Florida and, and. Piece of crap Charlie goes to the federal government and uses that hundred and fifty acres for these little small dwellings for every person from the third world. That came in through our border over the last four years.
But you can't put more than.
One.
You can only have one.
Only ones. Limit to one.
Yes.
One per property.
Oh.
Principal dwelling.
So the guy that.
Principal dwelling.
So the person.
There's three dwellings, then they can have three of them on the property. It's one per principal dwelling.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So the person that came in here that you were talking about earlier, that was a different, that's not an ADU thing.
Oh, shit.
So you wanna do camp.
That's a business.
That was a camping guide.
It's a business.
It's a business.
But, yeah.
A business.
Oh.
Because that area that he was looking into is a, is.
So this isn't like, like the solar scam where they buy the land and then they get funded and they, and they put that out and.
No.
Just offer money.
No, this is like, if you want, if your daughter wants to buy your house and build you a little house on your property.
Oh.
So you could stay on the property and they could take care of you.
Yes.
Like a casino.
I need a seat.
So although if your analogy were to use that hundred and fifty acres.
Yeah.
And a developer wanted to come in and put in, um, say, instead of a hundred and fifty, all, a hundred homes.
Or low income housing.
No, not a principal dwellings, then they can add another hundred of accessory dwelling units. You understand, you have to have one principal. So if somebody wanted to develop.
Okay.
Okay, they can then just develop a piece of property and add accessory dwelling units to the principal.
Principal home.
Yes.
And they could be like small homes.
Nine hundred square feet at the most, depending on the principal dwelling.
And it's, and they have to be attached.
No, they really don't.
Or by a breezeway or something, right?
Not anymore.
They can stand alone.
Oh, stand alone.
If you're gonna, um, present this at town meeting, you just make your.
Yeah. I'm just clarifying.
That every nap.
I'm just clarifying.
Really let it sink in. I'm gonna read the solar one every day.
How far can they be from the original dwelling? Is there a set regulation like so, some of the fees?
So there is, there is, when you say from the principal dwelling, depending on the location, but we have them. From the setbacks on the house.
Property line, so.
Okay, so in other words, they can't. So many feet. If it's the front, backside, whatever, okay?
Okay.
But not so much.
From the dwelling.
Pardon me?
Not so much from the dwelling.
Not so much from the dwelling, the principal dwelling.
Right.
Just the setbacks of the property.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question. So do these ADUs, they still have to go through like conservation for the wetland things?
You are, yes, they still have to.
Even though it's permitted, they have to get.
Oh, yeah, they have to do it.
So it doesn't mean if we take that, that hundred, hundred and fifty acres.
Right.
And somebody gets to be able to put a hundred homes on that, okay? Doesn't mean they're gonna be able to do a hundred ADUs because of the issues with conservation.
Right.
And you also have to make sure that the septic and water supplies are adequate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, find table seven.
Table seven is right.
No, that's six.
Now, table seven is from the beginning of chapters and.
Yeah, seconds. Yeah, I'll pull that up.
So that gives you. It's the blue sheet right there. Because I will set.
All right. John, it was brought to my attention that May fourteenth would be your last meeting.
It would be, but.
Would you, so, would you like them?
Joe Galavotti's birthday.
Oh, so you'd. Do you have plans?
No, I don't at this time.
Also, if you want us to meet that day as.
That's okay. I'm okay.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I won't be able to sign anything.
Do we need him?
Well, that, you're, you're. You have how many applicants for my position?
Well, no.
No, I'm talking about, do we need you to vote to have the letter of recommendation or whatever Don's presenting? As you were part of this whole process, do we need his vote to have, I think you should.
Okay, so we'll.
I, my vote would be that I. Rest assured that Mr. Davenport will put together a solid, um, letter of recommendation for this.
But you're asking people vote, vote wise, if we need to have him?
Yes, I'm wondering. I, I can ask town council.
You can ask town council or whatever.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure you don't have to be here to accept and vote and accept that letter from the planning board. For town meeting. I, I don't know, but I'll ask just in case.
Yeah, okay, town meeting will be over, right?
Right. Well.
Bylaw will be.
Well, so the whole point is that the bylaw gets passed and then we have to vote to send this letter to the Attorney General.
Right.
So it's just a matter of if we need you to be part of the vote or not.
That's, sure.
From the board.
Yes, that's what, the letter, that's what I'm, yeah.
Yeah. So. I'll find out if it makes a difference.
Okay.
Can't get rid of you.
I don't think he's liking. Or whatever makes that difference.
We want it on the record that you voted for this letter.
The legality.
You worked your butt off too.
Oh.
All right.
If he wants to.
No.
He wants to boost.
Katy Perry.
They have a press. In town.
Benny. Think he'd dump out at the top.
Have people looked at the meeting minutes?
Yeah.
You'd have, I have not, so I really didn't, which ones, they would have on some art.
I don't know, there's some, how many do you have?
I had more, but I didn't give them to you because I didn't think we were doing.
Well, why do you have?
That's why I was like.
I had two.
No, there's been a pile more.
Now you can add.
The property, you mean?
Because I stuck them in my bed.
Oh, the other.
I'll put a line here.
I mean, I've had any changes.
He spells Christina.
Huh?
Kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Read so long ago.
Right.
Right.
That I left them. That's why I only have two.
Right, yeah. Three, three, thirty, thirty, thirty four. One house here, richest.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I read twenty twenty four.
Build a house here.
Oh.
The date is August fourteenth.
Twenty twenty four, right?
August fourteenth.
So now. They build a house here and they build a little one there. Now they can have three.
So.
Each princess, so they would have just the properties.
In the decision, there's a special permit that needs. I think that's it. Other than that. I have to make the motion to accept with the, uh. No, the challenge. On the first line. That's special.
I didn't bring them because I. I mean, you were doing.
Permit, I got it, I got it.
Got it?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, I just don't have my key. Do an extra key in your.
All favor.
Where are my key?
Right in front of the. Or you wanna just unlock the door?
What were you doing?
Lightly open, and I'll start everything in there. Yeah, I will.
Thank you. What do you want?
The paper. Did you want me to take notes?
Just put the minute approved and it changes, or write it right on the minutes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Missed that one. I went through, I went through them quick.
Sorry, I'm leaving.
Are you sorry?
You have all copied them, right?
Want to see anything on twenty twenty four F?
Nope.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Uh, what, maybe we just do them all at once?
Can we? Do that again? Can we do them all at once?
You don't like to approve them all at once, right?
I haven't read them all, but I'm sure you probably could.
Bye, thank you guys for all you do.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Joe, I expect to see it on the court thing.
Oh, that's Joe, okay.
Twenty twenty four G, under legal notices, second line, it says M O N H T.
Yeah, I marked that up already. I'll suppose this one down.
So do we have a number? November thirteenth, twenty twenty four? Close to say voting. Listen to me, I.
Where were you at?
Number thirteen, twenty twenty four.
Well, I'm, I'm still in October.
I already went through all those. I'm sorry, Joe.
So confused.
I'm confused too. I wasn't reading that.
I went through.
Let's go each one individually.
Agreed, yes.
All right.
No, it's fine. We're gonna start with E, so.
Yep, twenty twenty four E, F, and G is what I have in my hands. E was the one with the permit.
Yeah.
You corrected. F had none.
I, I made the motion.
Yep, Don made him. I second.
Aye, aye.
Right, and then F, it looks like didn't have anything. I think you need to write who.
Do the same. Make the motion.
Yep, got it. Yes, yep. Second, on paper, aye.
You're on twenty twenty four G now?
Yeah, with the change in the second sentence during the six month moratorium. Second, on paper?
All right, I'm on twenty twenty three D now, October twenty third.
I didn't find anything on this one.
For case twenty twenty three D.
Second.
All in favor? Right now, I've got November thirteenth, twenty twenty four. It's a two pager.
The only thing I found was the voting one. Fourth line.
What was your comment?
The fourth line down, spelling, voting's missing an I. All in, all in favor, approved four O. Voting.
All right, uh.
Second, noted changes.
Second favor? All right, then we've got the regular meeting for October twenty third.
Motion to approve regular meeting minutes for October twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Second, on paper?
We're on December eleventh. On the board?
Yes.
Will prove the public hearing, case twenty twenty four, aye.
Second, on paper?
Aye, aye.
We're on December eleventh?
Yes, sir. Oh, this is the one that you picked March twenty sixth, the last one. Sixteen Summers wrote, I think she spelled the guy's name wrong.
Okay, we'll prove regular meeting minutes for December eleventh, twenty twenty four.
And there was one typo. Yeah, she just spelled somebody's name wrong.
Number three.
Gonzales.
Uh, second.
On paper?
Okay, so you're on, uh, case twenty twenty three D?
Yes.
Will prove the public hearing minutes for case twenty twenty three D.
Second, on paper?
Aye, aye.
All right, last but not least.
Motion to approve regular meeting minutes, March twenty sixth, twenty twenty five.
One of you all have to second it, I wasn't there.
Second. Aye, aye. So I'm gonna read.
Any other business? John, if you don't have to come back on the fourteenth, thank you for rejoining the planning board.
Been an interesting, interesting run.
It has been.